Now, I'll call this regular council meeting together. In order, I want to welcome everyone who's in the meeting, at the meeting tonight, and also those who are watching the meeting on G-10 television. We're going to begin by having our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Cindy Edwards, followed by the invocation by our city attorney, John Carter. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause at this moment to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this beautiful day, for the gracious blessings and benefits you give to each of us and to our city of Jacksonville. We pray for our mayor and council, who have many obligations and responsibilities as elected officials. One of their primary responsibilities is to set a budget. We pray for them, that they have arrived at this time of year when the budget is set, that your guidance and direction would be with them, so that the resources that have been collected, the funds, that they will use those for the common good of all of our citizens. Grant them guidance and grant them direction. We pray for our military, who are serving here and around the world. Keep them safe, bless their anxious families, and as always, be with each of us in our daily lives. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, we have before you a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. There's a couple little things on here. Number one, on the consent, you should have an amended copy of that particular item at your place. Also, under the public hearings, there's amended also for item number five, if you make note of that. And after, we're going to change the report, we're going to move the reports, one sitting in adjournment up under item number eight, and then budget discussion nine, following A and B. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
To approval of agenda as amended?
Any discussion? Here or not, all in favor, 5% aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This to our first, our section, public comment for the evening. Okay, without reading all the rules, you have, each speaker will have three minutes. When you come to the podium, this podium right over here, please state your name and address for the clerk. And there is a timer, it will be on for three minutes. And so we'll begin, I'm going to ask, I'm going to go in order of what's on the list here of people that signed up, and we have Jerry Potter. Jerry.
My name is Gerald Potter, I live at 118 Highland Court, and I'm basically here to see what are the chances you got to talk to about getting something done, about getting a dog park in Jacksonville. St. Kinston's got it, Moorehead's got it, and the only ones in this Jacksonville is apartment complexes that Jacksonville has one.
Mr. Ray, if you'll look into that.
Yes, sir, I'll follow up. I get in contact with Mr. Potter, and we'll have some dialogue about it.
Thank you. I appreciate it a lot.
My name's Rich Burke, live at 1348 White Oak River Road. I'm on the Onslow County side of Maysville. The issue I'm going to bring forth tonight deals with Jacksonville and Onslow County as a whole. The problem that I've noticed, and my wife has noticed here in Onslow County, is a substance that's being sold at the vape shops. That substance is called Delta 8 THC. With this product, Delta 8 THC, it's a synthetic marijuana that has been passed by the Farm Bill of 2018. Delta 8 THC is available in both vape format and smoke format, and there's other formats of it as well, edible formats. The problem with Delta 8 THC is that, one, it's not FDA-approved, and since it's not FDA-approved, it's not being regulated. So when they're selling the Delta eights, you don't know what the strength is on there or what's in it. Because of lack of regulations, it increases the chances of dangerous contaminants being inhaled by the user. Delta 8 is made from CBD, which is extracted out of hemp, and the way they get to the Delta 8, they send it through several different processes. The first process they do, they put it in a solvent called heptane. Heptane's a fuel additive for anti-knocking in your engines. From that point, they add one of the top chemicals. First one is hydrochloric acid, and the other one is p-tolene sulfonic acid, which is highly corrosive and highly toxic. And then they also add the final acid, alumina acid wash, which is aluminum oxide, which is your basic metal, to melt down aluminum metals. The problem with these here acids, there is no long-term studies on it, so far as what it's going to do to the human body. Delta 8 THC can and does wake up asleep and monster in an individual. It reacts differently from person to person. My wife and I know firsthand, because my stepson started using Delta 8 several months ago, and it has changed his personality pretty much on a permanent side now. So we don't know who he is, how he reacts now. He hasn't used it in the last two months, but the effects are still there. And when he was using it, it made him very violent towards my wife and myself. The health effects of Delta 8 THC has not been researched extensively, and it's not well-understood. There are 14, 21 states now throughout the country that had made Delta 8 THC illegal. And what I found out from North Carolina, it was illegal at the very beginning, but they revised their hemp laws, where they struck out, or actually revised their schedule, drug schedule class, where they took out Delta TH, took out all the THC products, where it's now legal in North Carolina, with the exception of regular marijuana.
I might have to stop you there, the three minutes are up. But thank you very much for that information, and if you would direct him, please, to somebody to, I'd like to hear more about it. Tony Harrell?
Yes, good evening. My name's Tony Harrell. My address is 4545 Commerce Street in Virginia Beach, Virginia. And first of all, good evening, Mayor Phillips, City Council, and other members of the city. On behalf of the CIG team and Town Center and Partners team, thank you tonight for your time and your ear, my presentation, and the other two that will be following, and other members of our team that may be speaking. For updates, some of those updates coming forth will be ongoing updates that we've been reporting on, as well as mine, and some of them will be a new agreement that Steve is going to detail more in his presentation, detailed agreement and offer. But of greatest excitement, in terms of my report, is our recent submission of the PUD, a Plan Unit Development Plan, recently that Justin submitted to the zoning department for the first review. This is our version of what we would call a public-private partnership, designed to create clearer terms for more efficient project completion. This plan is our opportunity to work better together, less confusion, streamlined approvals, all utilities available onsite, faster certificate of occupancies, hundreds of move-ins to reduce the number of affordable housings desperately needed in Jacksonville, all for the common purpose to deliver a beautiful community to the residents and the city. We believe the approval timeframe for the PUD is approximately 60 to 90 days, and we need your expedient support when that comes forth, or whatever departments it comes forth in these matters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Justin Anquist?
Justin Anquist, 557 Oak Grove Road, Chesapeake, Virginia, 23320. Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor, John, Josh, I appreciate it. And as Tony just said, you know, really excited about the progress that we're making on a lot of fronts and stuff, but, you know, I always seem like on the bearer of bad news at times about some of the challenges we're dealing with, too, because it's kind of a, it's for hand-holding as well as head-button along the way. And I just wanted, and I don't want to be like a broken record, I really don't, because I, but I also like to make sure that you guys are in the loop, understanding what we're going through, and kind of give you updates, the good and the bad and the ugly. You know, we keep dealing with some issues on a daily basis, it seems like that we're trying to resolve. We work with different building and zoning officials and stuff, and, you know, one of the biggest things that's been our biggest drawback right now and delay is the meter base issue. And last time I was here, we had six units that we were trying to get power on, and now we have 14 units, including those six. Since that time, we did resolve to get some power on, had an issue, had to get the power back off, and since then, we did try to get some stuff documented, and I appreciate that. But since we had a document, a document from the city that was supposed to spell out all the details of everything we needed to do and expect, then we called for inspection, and then we have another whole list of items that we're required to do. And now we're in the process of resolving those issues. And so I guess I'm just trying to ask for any help we can get to really try to clarify, you know, every issue that we're going to deal with as much as possible, so we can stop having these delays, because we have residents and people that we pre-lease these apartments to, that they're having to stay in hotels and motels and people's homes, you know, planning on already having, being able to move in. And so I don't know, I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you for the help you have given us, the support you have given us. I don't understand why there seems to be so much confusion at times, or, you know, it seems like things that come up that we think are on the same page, and next thing you know, we're, you know, butting heads, or digging into books, trying to figure out the codes. So I just ask for any help you can give us, because the reality is, I mean, this is costing us a lot of money, you know, and then a lot of just, a lot of lost of income, and a lot of just wasted time. You know, we've been on this project now for about a year. Actually, I think it's almost a year, yesterday or the day before, that we purchased this property. And we have 10, you know, CO'd units, which we're grateful for, but, you know, we should have 400 to 500 by now. So we're trying to pick the pace up, get the process going, get it rolling, so we can all, you know, have more heads in beds for the city of Jacksonville. So thanks to you for your support.
Steve Soller?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, John, Josh, and other city members. My name is Stephen Soller, of the 900 Barcelona Court, Chesapeake, Virginia. It's a pleasure to be up here tonight, to be in front of you. We've got some really great news. After the last city council meeting that we were at, we found out about a parcel of land that was available, and we explored the option of expanding our footprint in Jacksonville. And we really are excited, you know, to one of Josh's comments on May or April 24th, about partnering with the city, develop and provide quality, affordable housing in Jacksonville. And so what I've got, and I'm very excited about presenting to you, is our letter of intent to purchase that parcel. It's parcel number 040851. I think you should all have a copy in front of you. The address is 100 Recreation Loop. We're not asking for any of that land to be donated to us. I think the price was 1.488 million. We've offered a 1.588 million, so that's a difference of another 100,000 on top of that. So that's a 676,000 difference between what has been proposed to give to another developer versus offering it to us. And we are very excited about partnering with you guys and developing a new property in Jacksonville, and helping ease the dire straits that you guys are facing right now with affordable housing in Jacksonville. So keep that 676,000 number in mind, over what you guys are selling it to the other developer for. And let's step back five months to the water bill that we've been discussing every month for the past five months. You have the original copy that showed our utilities from May of 2022 to February of 2023, where I broke it down and showed where CIG feels that we were owed 165,798.86. We started making headway, and I've been working with Josh every month, and Josh was very excited last time I was here, to present me with a figure that said that he thought that he could get pushed through with no strings attached. The figure was 146,650. Add the couple of months of usage of water to my figure, deduct that from the 165, we were right in the ballpark, and I felt like we were making headway. An agreement had to be drawn up, and the agreement that was drawn up had strings attached, and the strings that were attached to that agreement said that we had to sign our rights away to having to have any new units of water turned on had to be CO'd first. Now, there are several hundred units out there that don't need a CO to it, so we would be giving up all of our rights to get new water at the mercy of having a CO to the property. So as we were looking through that, that balance due of 146,650, that's all new charges that have been overcharged for water that we haven't used. If you look at my third page of spreadsheet that I've got on there, I have it broken down to a monthly basis, all the way till May 1st, where Josh has stopped on April 18th, and our grand total that we should have paid would have been 101,990. We paid 249,430 to the city, that leaves a credit owed of 141,912 to us, not including the 146,500 that Josh had offered to us.
I'm going to have to stop you. I'm going to have to stop you. Your time has expired.
One last thing.
One last thing.
I ask that you make a motion to vote on this tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Eli Patino?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Eli Patino. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, previous business owner three years, and currently a seven-year business owner with 38 employees of a great business locally. My wife, Arlene Patino, has been a Realtor in this county for over 16 years, and combined, we have been in business, we have been business owners in this committee for over 16 years. We introduced a concept of bringing a summer collegiate baseball team to Jacksonville with the Old North State League about two months ago. We would love the opportunity to move forward with the negotiated lease agreement to play at Jack Emey at Ball Field in 2024. In doing so, we hope to bring to Jacksonville and its citizens an unforgettably great entertainment venue of safe, affordable, family- and community-focused baseball that is sure to be great for our wonderful town. We want to clarify quickly with the city council members and the members of the TDA that a lease agreement for Jack Emey at Ball Field would not be contingent on TDA support. We feel a locally-owned and operated summer collegiate baseball team would be in the best interest for Jacksonville and its citizens in 2024 and beyond. The Old North State League is the largest summer collegiate baseball team in North Carolina and the, and the nation, with teams of Fayetteville, Kinston, Elizabeth City, Brunswick County, and 11 other great North Carolina towns, with more to come. And I just want to say, there's a town, there's a saying outside in the, in the foyer, one of the signs, it says, has a big one, it says, "One City, Our City, My City." For my wife and I, Jacksonville has been an integral part for our family in many ways. We go to church here, we built a lot of memories here. I served in the Marine Corps in this town, in this county, both locally and overseas. We believe this wholeheartedly, that Jacksonville is a wonderful place, and we look forward to an opportunity in partnering with the city of Jacksonville and its citizens for many years to come. Thank you.
Carmen Spicer?
Good evening, I'm Carmen Spicer. My address is 59 Kerr Street, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28540. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council. I'm here this half, this evening to get some clarity, and maybe you can help me. I'm sure I'm starting at the right place. One of the things that I'm asked, requesting for, and I think the city attorney for sharing with me, because I actually was going down the road of maybe a public record request, but I think I would like to share with you, the council, my concerns as a taxpayer and as a city, as a concerned citizen. The things that I'm concerned with, and I'm sure you'll be able to help me with, is for, I would like to be able to identify all the directors, the directors, what board, what department they are directors of, their names, their previous salaries, and of course, their current salaries. I also would like the council, the council to make note that it has been 20 years since we've had an African-American captain on the City of Jacksonville Police Department. I don't know if it was an oversight, I don't know if it was, no one qualified, but I would want the council to take that in consideration. So what I'm asking, I would ask again, my concerns are the directors for the City of Jacksonville, the employer for the City of Jacksonville, names, their salaries, their previous salaries, and of course, their salaries of the increase. Now, I would like to ask, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this question right now, how long would it normally take to receive this information, Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, we can get that to her, Madam Clerk, by the end of the week, we give you your email address. I think we have that readily available.
I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am, by the end of the week, we should be able to send you an email.
By the end of this week?
Yes, ma'am, I think we've already put that together for some other folks, so we can just send it to you also.
Okay, that'd be great. Well, thank you so much, council. Happy Tuesday to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Nareski?
Michael Nareski, 201 Pigeon Lane, Swansboro, North Carolina. As everybody knows, I'm the executive director of U and Power U, and first and foremost, I'm here to actually thank city council and the city of Jacksonville for all the help and the support that they have given to our families and our friends at Town Center. Without your help and your assistance, there would be at a very bare minimum 50 families that may be locating in the woods tonight. I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and from other nonprofits, and from the people of Town Center that we're in contact with on a daily basis. Thank you. We know approximately, there's about nine individuals still left, their families. We're going to move one this week, so, and I know the till is empty again. So that'll be up to other people to look, to see what we can do for the remainder families. We're currently working with three of them, and we think in the next three weeks, we will have them housing. Second reason why I'm here is because I am the chairperson for the Jacksonville Onslow Welcome Home Council, and as the chairperson, I take that task on vivively. We now have the capability of moving 130 people to work on a daily basis. We also just negotiated out with the House of Rayford, in the next 90 days, we will be moving people on daywork, and we're working out the logistics for the mothers that want to go to work for daycare, for those individuals. These are some of the things that the council's doing. I'd also like to explain to you that because of the time that we spent in Charlotte with Councilman Jackson, we were able to find out, and we vetted it out, and on Thursday, we made the announcement. Through the Affordable Care Act and some other mechanism put into place, and were placed into law, we now can offer every individual that we welcome home, free health insurance through Blue Cross Blue Shield. It is real medical insurance. Blue Cross Blue Shield currently is getting paid $13.5 billion a month to manage this across the country. We also have been able to work out with the insurance company that's overseeing it in 50 states, that we now, any family or individual that earns less than $35,000 a year can also get that insurance free of charge. We also worked out that any family of three that has an earning potential of under $60,000 can also get that free medical insurance. We have the QR codes, we have the information, we had a discussion about it on Thursday, which I thank members that were there for their participation. We are making a difference in Jacksonville, and here's the one thing I tell you, at no cost. That's the difference. We have consolidated nonprofits now at the house, not only at the chapel, and I will get off. We now have Philippians Place, U and Power U, Gateways to Change, Jacksonville Onslow Council, it's all under one roof at 1038 Henderson Drive, and that's growing.
Thank you very much. So that moves us now to, I'll thank all those that came and spoke tonight, thank you for your, your time. We have minutes from the April 24, 2023 special meeting, and May 2, 2023 workshop meeting, and three consent items, and at this time, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval for the adoption of the special minutes and workshop meetings along with the consent item?
Any discussion? Here or not, all in favor, 5% aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Let me get this thing. This brings us to item number four, it's a quasi-judicial special use permit in Site Three, Type Three Site Plan for Caliber Collision at 2679 Richlands Avenue. Being quasi-judicial, I must swear, you, you swear that the information you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Here, let me go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Agenda item four is a special use permit in Type Three Site Plan for Caliber Collision at 2679 Richlands Highway. This application was submitted by Cross Development. Before you, on the screen is the location, 2676 Richlands Highway. Some of you may recall that it was the Colonial Materials Building several years ago, and before that, local Pepsi distributor, years, many years ago. Property is currently zoned corridor commercial. A small portion of it is in the flight path overlay, adjacent uses of the Castro Oil Change and the Murphy Express at the corner of Hickory Ri, Hickory Road and Richlands Highway. Some undeveloped property to the southeast, and across Richlands Highway is undeveloped properties, and also some properties that the city council recently rezoned at the corner of Hickory and Richlands Highway to corridor commercial. Before you, on the screen is the site plan. Again, their proposed use is a auto-body paint with, or a auto-repair service center with paint and body, which in the commercial corridor zoning district requires a special use permit, and that's why it's before you. They are proposing to add additional storage area, beef up existing asphalt. They will also be required to put sidewalks along the property, as well as quite a bit of additional landscaping to meet UDO requirements. The planning board reviewed this at their April 10 meeting, and they, along with staff, are recommending approval of this request, with findings of fact, A through G being found in the affirmative, with one condition found in your staff report, and that's addressing some outstanding TRC comments, minor items, they've already addressed a few of them, but we want that condition to hold as the TRC has not finished the review of the recent middle. Staff will be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Jeremy Smith there. Jeremy, is there anyone here on behalf of the owner?
No, they asked if they were out of town, and I said staff would be more than capable to handle it, so it's pretty straightforward. If they are, they, Ms. Hernandez?
I have a hand back here.
Yes, this is Melissa Hernandez, she's been my contact with Cross Development.
Okay.
So if you have any questions?
Can she add anything?
Um, not anything additional, unless you have a specific question that I cannot answer.
And, Counsel, do you have any questions of her? Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? This is a public hearing, anyone's want to speak to this particular issue? All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing on this matter, and Counsel, you're being asked to approve the request, proposed request.
Mayor Phillips and council, I recommend with conditional approval of a special use permit for Type Three, based on the facts of finding- permit for type three, based on the facts of findings A through G found in the affirmative and the outstanding TRC comments shall be addressed before the final site plans are approved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Jeremy. This brings us to, uh, number five, and this is a budget, this is the budget, uh, FY24 budget hearing, and Mr. Ray will be providing us information on this.
Mayor, what we're presenting to counsel tonight is the FY24 budget public hearing. Uh, we are required to hold a public hearing every year before counsel can consider adoption of the budget. We presented the budget to the counsel in April, you see, the, the plan that we're considering is for the fiscal year FY24, which begins on July 1st, 2023, it ends on June 30th of 2024, uh, the, the law requires that the balanced budget be adopted by counsel by June 30th of 2023. You'll see on the bottom here in the proposal and the items that counsel has worked through over the last few months, the tax rate will have no change for next year, the rate of 60 cents per $100 evaluation still goes up the same, the water and sewer rate has a 2.25% increase as previously scheduled by counsel, and recycling and residential sanitation rate has a proposed increase of $4, which is included in this budget. You'll see on the screen, we're showing you the FY23 amended budget, which is what we're currently operating with, those numbers include all the amendments that counsel have made throughout the year, you'll see the total budget approximately $142 million. On the far right column, you will see the FY24 proposed budget, and you'll see that number at approximately $118 million. We've broken it down by fund, for anyone that would like to comment on those items. Uh, the FY24 proposed budget includes this differentiation, you'll still see the same $118 million, total operations approximately $99 million, capital projects 4.5 million, and then transfers at 14.1 million. In addition, out of the operations of $99 million, the total salaries and benefits across all funds for the FY24 budget total 58,996,169. As previously mentioned, the counsel received the budget presentation on April 4th, at that time, we posted the budget on the website, we also put hard copies at the public library and the clerk's office for review. At that point, we encourage people to come in, and they can review those documents at any point, and they can make copies of the documents, or they can just access it online. April 16th, uh, or actually, May 16th, my apologies, tonight is the public hearing, and then we're requesting counsel consider the adoption of the FY2324 budget on June 6th. Those are the items in the proposed FY24 budget.
Counsel, any questions, uh, city manager? Thank you, this is, I'm going to open up the public hearing in this matter, is there anyone wishes to speak, uh, regarding this issue with the budget at this time? If so, raise your hand. No hands, close the public hearing, and we'll move on to items under nonconsent. First one will be number six, and this is, uh, the baseball, actual baseball agreement.
Mayor, my slide has magically disappeared, so I'm going to walk you through this item. At the last meeting, we presented an opportunity for the City of Jacksonville to partner with a local group, um, to bring a baseball team to our community. We're very excited about the opportunity, during that workshop, we, we talked about the ability to work with a, a local couple, actually, Mr. Patino spoke this evening during our public comments section, um, and they would work with the Old North State Baseball League, they would actually have a franchise here, they would own that team, and they would be the owner of that, uh, of that team here in the community. Since that meeting, uh, Mr. Carter has worked through, with Mr. Patino, to put together an agreement that would allow them to lease the Jack MB at baseball field and to bring this team to our community for the summer of 2024. Part of that process is for the lease agreement to set in place, so that the Patinos can start the work for next year and start the process of utilizing, creating that team, uh, creating a team name and start the marketing aspect. One of the things that we added in this attachment for the counsel is the lease agreement, so that you can review that document. The initial agreement is scheduled for June 1st, 2024, through Ju- July 31st of 2024, it's set for a 30-day period, because the team will operate within that 60 days, they'll have anywhere from 25 to 30 home games that would happen here in Jacksonville, then they will have 25 to 30 games that'll happen at opposing sites to complete their full season. Uh, the lease agreement is for three years, it sets up the first year at the terms that is, have been presented to counsel, each additional year up to the other two years will be reviewed annually, so that we can consider any type of changes to that lease agreement. We have proposed no charge for the 2024 season, and we would, for the 2025 season, we would review those items, uh, not just the fee, but we would review the operations and the overall process. Uh, we have presented that to counsel, I did add an email that we received from Mr. and Mrs. Patino, um, earlier today, I added that, a hard copy to your, um, seats at the dais, so that you could have that in case there were any questions, uh, or comments from that discussion.
Counsel, any questions, Mr. Ray, on this matter? Thank you. I think baseball is, uh, is, it, the American pastime, and I think, I think we're long overdue in seeing, uh, some activity with baseball, other, I mean, we do have American Legion ball, we do have senior Tar Heel League ball, I guess, still, and, uh, through the Recreation Department, but, uh, uh, it's, it's a beautiful field to play on, and, uh, I want to, uh, I think it'd be a good idea for us to take a step back and, and examine the agreement again, uh, ahead of time, and, uh, I know there's been some other interest, uh, that has come up, and, uh, to give us some time to be able to, uh, you know, discuss this with the other parties, and also, uh, be, you know, to be fair about things, you know, I know that, uh, Mr. Patino and his wife were the first up to bat, but, uh, we have, I'm full of baseball puns today. Yeah, but anyway, I, I think it's a great thing what they're doing, I really appreciate it, but, you know, to, in fairness, I think we need to hear from the other party that has voiced some concern, or vo- not voiced concerns, but voiced interest, but it may be that these interests are so, so diametrically different that, uh, it may be a no-brainer, you know, so, uh, what I would like to do is have one of the council members, uh, or get the council, uh, to agree to defer decision on this until, uh, possibly the June 20th regular meeting, and, uh, by then, I do want, I do want to establish one thing, i- is there a particular time when this has to be completed?
Mayor, if I may, and I'll, I'll speak for the Patinos briefly, if you want to ask them questions after, Mayor, part of the process for them to get established in the league, they're purchasing the team, so they have to go through the process of purchasing the team, in our dialogue, uh, over the last couple of months, because we've, we've talked to them when they brought this proposal to us, uh, we talked about the schedule for next year, uh, in order for them to, A, develop a team name, have the team established here and start their marketing, uh, they need to get started as soon as possible, right? They want to establish themselves here, uh, but the process for them is really just based on their relationship with the league, from what I've seen, Mayor, uh, the focal point is to establish the baseball team for the 2024 season, um, but the challenges of, of making the improvements. On the city side, Mayor, if we, if we do this, one of the things that we want to do is work with the TDA to potentially make some improvements to the field, and so we would like to, uh, engage the TDA in that dialogue, so, uh, a couple of different things happening.
Well, you can move on that already, I mean, as far as the, the field, I mean, you know, and talking with the TDA, don't you think?
Yes, sir. Where, uh, some of the bleachers, for example, can be used elsewhere in the city, so there's...
Definitely, yeah.
That will, that's a, that's a good, good investment by the city. Mr. Mayor, I, I will reluctantly, uh, make a motion that we table this till the June 20th meeting, um, I'm very appreciative of, uh, the Patinos, thank you, um, and I'm excited about what they, what they have to offer, and I hope, uh, that this 30 days will, will, will show that, uh, the best way for the city to proceed, so, with that, I make a motion, table until the 20, June 20th.
I'll second that, may I have a second, any other discussion, comments? I, I hope that's not out of line, Mr. Patino, could you come up, please? Yeah, that's fine. I was going to contact you earlier, uh, w- will that work for you to, to go to the, the June 20th meeting, I, I'm not saying we'll make a decision, you know, favorable, but a decision by the 20th of June would...
It would be doable, yes, I mean, um, it, of course, we're collaborating with the City of Jacksonville, so obviously, we're appreciative of everybody's involvement, we've always been very, um, humble and, uh, contrarian our approach with you guys, we really appreciate everything that you guys do, and like I said, we've, we're from this community, we love this community, so, obviously, the, the initial thought of this was actually something of a brainstorm of mine, actually, months, months ago, before I even approached you guys, and, so when we approached you guys, obviously, we were the first ones to, from my understanding, introduce the concept to you guys, and so, yes, we've, of course, if it needs to be tabled, we understand.
We certainly appreciate that, and, uh, we're going to give you all due consideration. All right. Okay, a vote to, uh, defer until the June 20th meeting is on the table, all those in favor, signify by saying aye? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so that brings us to item number seven, this is a McAdams contract for the 400 acres at, uh, our Williamsburg site, and Anthony Prince will be, uh, presenting this item.
Evening, Mayor, counsel, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this again. So as you recall, we, we introduced this subject during the last meeting, where we went over in great detail the process that a team of your city staff members have gone through to solicit interest, evaluate proposals from professional firms, and come to you and make a recommendation on a team of folks who we feel are best qualified to assist us with developing this project, taking it from, again, like I said before, the blank slate to implementation. So, um, during the last meeting, counsel didn't have really any objections to us continuing to talk to McAdams, which was the preferred contractor that we had selected, so since that time, we engaged them in contract negotiations, but one thing I want to caution the coun- the counsel about here is that these are architectural and engineering services, so there's only so far that we can go in negotiating on price, we have to select the firm based upon qualification. It's based upon the Brooks Act, which is a federal rule, and the Mini Brooks Act, which of course, is the state version. So we're here today to, to ask for counsel to approve two things, one is to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with McAdams once all the paperwork is done, and, and our friend, Mr. Carter, is happy, uh, but then also execute a budget amendment to appropriate the funds to execute the contract, so those are the two steps that would need to occur. The contract itself is going to be a bit unique, and the fact that it's not a one and done, so the way that we're structuring this, we want to be strategic in our approach. We will have a base contract that enables a variety of different services that we will need from cradle to grave on this project, anything from planning and site evaluation all the way through construction administration, but because we don't know what we don't know yet, um, we want to execute this contract with purchase orders that are, address individual phases along the way, so the, the one that we would like for counsel to approve us to engage in is phase one, and I'll go through some of the, the details of that in a second, but it's really the initial part where we do all the planning and master planning for the site. Um, the good thing here is that we can award phases as we go, so we can cash flow the cost, so instead of taking on a million-dollar contract or whatever the entire thing might be, you know, we can take it in pieces, it also gives us some cost efficiencies, and I'll describe that here in a little bit more detail in a second, but, like it says here on the screen, um, we can award phases as we go or not, so I feel that it's highly unlikely that McAdams will disappoint us with their performance, but if in fact we run into issues, we can always walk away and go out and see what the market has to offer, uh, from other firms. So this is the phase one scope of work, and you can see the total amount there, um, when I mention cost efficiencies, phase one initially was about $608,000, okay? And one of the ways that we're able to reduce that scope is, or was to pull out some tasks that we don't feel are really necessary right now, so for instance, the original scope had a full site survey of the property, it had a full geotechnical investigation, it had an overflight of the site to get precise topography for all 400 acres. Now, that would be great, but re- in reality, we don't need that to do this piece, and in the end, it's very unlikely that we're going to need that level of data for the entire site. So when we get to phase two, we'll probably end up doing some of that work, but we'll do it in more concentrated areas, so that we're reducing the cost as well as the amount of time to collect all of that data. So again, those are the types of cost efficiencies that I mentioned. Here, the first part of it is a market analysis and public involvement, and one of the reasons why we'd really like to move forward with this tonight, if at all possible, is because we want that public involvement piece to occur while people are, are out and about, while people are out using our fields and our various recreational assets, because we want the contractor to see that, and we also want to be able to engage them while they're doing those activities, to ask questions and get feedback. Uh, it'll take 16 weeks, according to the schedule, to do all that public involvement, so if we start now, that basically puts us towards September before we're able to complete it. If we wait any further, if we wait any longer, you know, it puts us kind of towards the tail end of the summer. Uh, Recreation Parks Master Plan, this is to get us an update to our current plan, so that it meets the standards for Part F grants, currently, it does not, and by doing this additional work, it will bring that plan up to the standard with all the required components for us to be able to submit for future grants. Uh, and then, of course, the 400 acre master plan is just a very large site, and that's where our landscape architects, our architects, the, uh, other professionals that are on the team are going to advise us on how best to possibly use this land. So again, the total amount is $386,309, which was down from, as I mentioned before, 600 and some odd, which is where we started. When you look at additional phases, we know that the property is going to require rezoning, and you talked about a special use permit earlier for the, uh, Caliber Collision Center, we'll probably look at something like a plan unit development to set up special rules for this area, because what we're trying to do here is not necessarily standard for a traditional zoning district, um, that will come after we do the master planning process, but then there are also another, uh, series of additional steps that need to be done. We may end up with two phases, we may end up with three or four, but the main thing is, we want to take it a step at a time, so that we're doing it deliberately and strategically. So next steps, if counsel authorizes us to execute the contract and approves the budget amendment, uh, we hope to execute the contract in early June, we've been working with the contractor, they've agreed to all of our terms, really, it's a matter of assembling all the documents, getting a... Really, it's a matter of assembling all the documents, getting them processed and signed. We will be talking to the TDA about partial funding for the project in May. It's likely that we will ask them to support 50% of this cost. Now, whether or not they choose to do that is yet to be seen, but what we do know is that the TDA members, every single one of them, have voiced support for what we're trying to do here. There's also an obvious linkage between the tourism mission and what we're trying to do with sports tourism. Kickoff meeting, once we get all the contracts executed, we're hoping mid-June, where we're going to bring in some stakeholders, try to set up the framework for our public involvement process, which likely would begin late June, early July, and then basically run the rest of the summer. Public involvement is something that a lot of folks have been asking about. There's quite a bit of excitement out there, so I just wanted to give you a glimpse as to what you could expect. They're, they're wanting to create a circular process by which we're identifying the stakeholders. We go out and engage with them where they are in a meaningful way, solicit their input. We analyze all of that input, see where we are here at loop back. Once we've analyzed it, we come back to them and build consensus upon how that input has created or assisted in creating the master plan for the 400 acres, and then, once we get all of the stakeholders in alignment, including the Council and others, then we can move on towards implementation. The master plan will give us a good idea of how to go about implementing, because we're going to break that down in phases as well. There's no way we can eat this apple all at one time. Again, meeting them where they are, that's a key step here. We will have the contractor do a lot of this work, but the staff, our staff will do a lot of the work too, because we want to hear what they have to say, and we know all, all these people anyway, so we need to engage in these discussions to get meaningful feedback. But one of the things I'm most excited about, and I don't know, maybe that's just the data nerd in me here, but having a, a scientific survey that goes out and it solicits input from the general public in a way that we can rely on. This isn't just somebody coming up with a survey monkey and sending it over face, you know, sending it out over Facebook. Challenge there is, you can't always rely on those results. People take the survey oompteen million times, and it doesn't necessarily get the coverage that you're looking for. This will, the company ETC, as you see there, recently did a similar survey for the City of Wilmington, and the feedback is extremely useful. If you're interested in this, we, we could probably send it out to the Council so they see the results, but it gives us meaning, meaningful feedback on what the community is thinking from a recreation park standpoint. So again, here are the next steps in the timeline. We certainly would appreciate Council approving the ability to execute the contract and also executing the budget amendment, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about, about the project.
Any questions, Anthony?
Thank you.
You're being asked to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract with McAdams and to approve the legislative budget amendment to approve appropriate funds for the Phase One scope of work. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So that brings us now, we're going to skip over number nine for right now. We're going to go straight to reports, and I'll begin at Mr. Jackson's end down there.
Number eight.
I'm sorry, I missed number eight altogether. That takes me to leave my glasses in the truck, won't it? Okay. All right, this is for the Community Outreach Appropriative Funds. Mr. Ray is going to present this item.
Thanks, Mayor. I thought you were just going to skip me, because I've already talked twice.
Well, you have had your two times up.
Give me one extra chance here. We're presenting an item back to Council to continue on an outreach effort that Council's already taken direct attention to previously. If you look at the screen, you will see that in FY '23, City Council approved $50,000 of Community Development Block Grant CARES Act funds to provide for residential assistance for relocation. That's something that is, is a great project here in the community. It's a, it's an opportunity that Council was able to utilize funds that Tracy has within her toolbox to reach our citizens and supply for a need. These funds were dedicated directly to Onslow Community Outreach for housing relocation assistance for residents of Town Center. So it was defined concern and a defined response based on that issue. On April 18th of this year, Council considered this program again and appropriated $10,000 from the general fund to this community partnership, so that we could ensure that we did not have people that had those challenges and therefore became homeless in their transitional process. Currently, Onslow Community Outreach, as of the end of last week, those funds have almost been completely utilized. When I spoke to Marcy on Friday of CIG, she said that there are still some individuals within Town Center that are trying to relocate, but there's a, there's still a need within Town Center for those individuals. So what we're asking is Council to consider an additional $10,000 of the general fund to appropriate for this project and utilize the same stipulations that were established for Round One and for Round Two.
Questions, Mr. Ray? Thank you. Council, you've been asked to approve the, consider the budget amendment of $10,000 to Onslow Community Outreach with the eligibility requirements required for disbursement. So we have a motion? Any second?
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that, now we can go to the reports, right? And I'll start with Mr. Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past weekend, I was able to present a proclamation in your behalf, or your stead, for Splash event that was conducted by Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission. I actually have some numbers here, but I think it was like 291 that actually was at the event. It was an increase of, of about 53% from last year, and I, I think it was increase of 47% of, of occupancy at our hotels. So it's a growing event, and it's also now, for the first year, on the North Carolina triathlon series. So Scott and his team, Scott Smith and his team, is doing a great job with tourism in the area, and it looks like I talked to a lot of those that participated, and they were, they didn't even know that this jewel was in North Carolina. I have people from Wilmington talking highly of, of how the, you know, how the event was conducted and the area that was conducted in, and it was a beautiful day for it. That's all.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, sir, I have one. So on the Planning Board this past week, Ryan, he spent time going over, we had one new member, but going over the UDO and kind of explaining that to us and all the members, so that was really helpful to learn that and for the viewing public, to really understand what that means and how that helps development, understanding of that. So that was very helpful, and it was a very good, informative meeting, and you can catch it, to catch up and everything too, if you have questions and concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Patino, better? No reports this evening? Dr. Washington?
Yes. Last month, the mayor and I had the opportunity to assist with the North Carolina MAC community that came and honored the North Carolina semifinalists for the Military Trial of the Year. The recipients received not only a personalized letter from Governor Cooper, but they also received Carolina swag from the Carolina Hurricanes, the Carol, Carolina Panthers, also a personalized letter from James Jordan, who is Michael Jordan's brother, retired from the United States, Master Sergeant from the United States Army. Also, on Saturday, April the 29th, I had the opportunity to attend the first annual John W., Mr. JW Broadhurst Scholarship Award that was sponsored by the Georgetown Alumni Association. So the number one recipient of this year, Mr. Douglas Sanders II, son of Colonel and Dr. Sanders, received a four-year scholarship to Penn State, but what is so interesting about this young man is that he is autistic. So he is planning to major in communications with a future as a CIA agent. Today, I had the opportunity to attend the virtual MAC meeting, and without a laborious process, I'll just say, one of, one of the interesting things that came out of this meeting was that approximately two years ago, Secretary of Defense, Mr. Lord Austin, commissioned, the naming commission, to look at various different military installations, particularly in the South, that were named after Confederate generals, and to that, Fort Liberty, which will be the new name for Fort Bragg, that particularly military installation change will occur on 2 June of this year, which is on a Friday. So 2 June, Fort Bragg will officially become Fort Liberty, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards?
Thank you, sir. Recently, at the end of April, I was privileged and honored to be part of the Vietnam Veterans Recognition Event that was held over at Lejeune Memorial Gardens. Was pleased to attend and support that event in honor of our veterans, both living and those we've lost along the way. It's important that we keep these guys and gals in mind. Sadly, we're seeing fewer and fewer of them still here with us each year, so we want to honor them while we can. I was, also had some fun judging an art contest at Sturgeon City lately, which was a lot of fun for me personally. We've had some busy things going on at Transportation Advisory Committee. I know we have a very, very hefty project year coming up. Lots of projects on the docket. One that's of personal interest and fun for me is that we're going to finally see some ADA improvements in sidewalk along Gum Branch. That's an corridor that we've had a lot of safety issues, and there's goat trails, not sidewalks, there's no safe place to walk or bike, so that's a huge piece that's coming for our citizens to be safe, you know, in any means of transportation up and down that street. And then a final just note, Memorial Day weekend is coming up, you know, enjoy the time with your families, take time to remember what the holiday really is for, and be safe. Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback on, on a couple of the comments, Mr. Jackson's comment about the triathlon and how Scott and Marissa Reader have been able to grow that, that event. Recently, the Tourism Development Authority authorized some additional funding to the Sports Commission, so that they could hire an additional person to pursue some more events and provide better services and continue to grow the sports tourism part of, of, of what we do here in Onslow County and Jacksonville, and I just want to give both Scott and Marissa Reader both a, a shout-out for doing a great job for us and, and thank them. And then Ms. Edwards' comment on, on the transportation. As you're aware, we've had funding issues at the state level at the DOT, not being able to fully fund all of the projects that were approved for, for Jacksonville and Onslow County. We got, the other night, other day, we got a report that all projects that were on our wish list have now been funded, but we, we still got some more on the wish list. Maybe that's not quite a true statement. We have, we have some more projects on a wish list, but those that we had gotten approved previously are now in the funding status, status, which means they're moving forward. And as Ms. Edwards also alluded, we'll begin the process of adding to our wish list and coming up with the projects that we want to see over the next 10 years. That's our next, on our plate for our next job. So other than that, I'm proud to be here, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one thing, and it was very personal for me. This, this week is actually Peace Officers Memorial Week across the country, and having been a police officer for over 30 years with the Jacksonville Police Department, it was, it's special, it's special to see as many people that turned out this, this past Monday. We had, actually had the observance on Monday. In our history of the police department here in Jacksonville, we've lost two officers to criminal acts. Terry Lee Linder, who, who died on May 11th, 1979, and Bill Whitehead, William T. Whitehead, who died in, on, in the line of duty on May 31st of 1981. We're fortunate and unfortunate there. It's unfortunate that these two officers passed at the line of duty, but we're very fortunate that no more have. And I think this remembrance every year is very important for, for the profession and for the, for the citizens of the city to, to be able to get that appreciation for these officers that work so hard, day in and day out, to protect them. And it was a very well put-together ceremony, I have to say, to Chief Inero, great job with you and your crew in putting that together. It was good to see a lot of the old folks that, that used to be police officers, that are retired now, out there, and it's, it was just a really good occasion. Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. We just completed our 11th Annual Jacksonville Jamboree. For any of you that may know, we started the jamboree in 2012. This year, we hand, we experienced the, the jamboree at the Commons, which is our, our biggest jewel, right? It's, it's the largest property, we can bring the most amount of people together with the biggest space, and that's what we're looking for. We had 6,500 attendees this year, which is a remarkable number. I will say to Susan and to Michael's team, great job. One thing that we had, Crystal Blockett in our HR, she performed the National Anthem at the jamboree and at the Peace Officer Ceremony this week, and if you've never heard Crystal sing, you need to call her, because the girl has an amazing voice and a talent that far exceeds what she can do here with the city, and it's a blessing to have her as part of our team. We had 16 food trucks active during the jamboree, feeding all of these people multiple opportunities. So, you know, when we bring it, we bring together our partners, we bring them together for, for fun, for food, for family, and just for the festivities that we have. We also had a pep parade this year, and I don't think this is the pep parade, but anytime you can bring, I'm going to assume that's a llama into a party, then you know it's a real party. So it's a lot of fun and exciting. We had, at the pep parade, we had an award for best dressed, best tricks, best in show, and most unique. Again, I think the llama should win that, but for, for the event, this is an opportunity for us to allow people to come in and enjoy what was some fantastic weather. We had a softball tournament, and we had the basketball, which was a multi-weekend event, and so that's another one of these outreach efforts that we provide to our citizens so that they can come out and have a good time amongst the family. You can ride a train if you come through. So I just tell you, if you haven't been to the jamboree in a couple of years, next year, put it on the calendar, because it's very exciting to see our people out and about, looks like dancing and throwing things at each other, and that's what we do for fun in the community. So it's, it's very exciting. Great job to your teams for making this happen. We appreciate it very much. We also had the opportunity for the State of the Community Address. The mayor represented us very well at the event. I appreciate the time and energy put into. You'll see that the county, the base, the school system, the hospital, and the college were all there, but by far, the mayor stole the show just for being the mayor, and that's, there's a value add there. There's a great community group that was at this event, so people from around the community that, that may not have known what was going on in the city, and the mayor was able to share some of the excitement for what's going on currently and some of the things that we're going to tackle next year. The key here is to remember that all of this happens with all these partners. It doesn't just happen with one of us, it happens with all the partners together, everybody in that room pulling together, going in the same direction, and that's how, that's how we create one city, one community. It's multiple partnerships, and that's the exciting thing about our, our council members, our council meetings. We're having people show up for our meetings that want to be part of, of something exciting moving forward, and, and that, that makes us happy. And as the mayor said, we, excuse me, we did have the Peace Officers Memorial Day observance on Monday. The mayor was able to speak. Hats off to Lisa and to Chief Inero for, for presenting this. A lot of times, you drive by and you're not thinking about the memorial. A lot of times, you drive by and you're not thinking about the memorial. The value behind the memorial is to not only appreciate the current people serving in these jobs around the country, it's, as the mayor said, you don't forget those that have given that sacrifice, and that's, that's a value for us. It takes a lot of pride in the community to build something of this stature, and then every year to go back and visit, so you're bringing a group together. The group that was there had all of our fire and our police and our military and our emergency personnel services, and the way that this event is put on is in the top-notch level of appreciation. So, throughout this week, we encourage you to say thank you to the men and women that are serving our community. As General Niebel said, they're serving in peacetime outside the gates, and that's our people, you know, and that's, that's the people that are here tonight, very appreciative to seeing our team be present and to say thank you for all the work that we, that we do day in and day out. Kudos to, to the chief, to the mayor, to the sheriff, to Reverend Churchwell, and to General Niebel for being there. And as I said, Lisa narrates this event for us, and she did a phenomenal job in the course of, of recognizing those individuals that are here and that, that may not be here. I will add, Mayor, we mentioned earlier, Mr. Jackson mentioned the splash event. What he didn't add is, those individuals decided to compete in the swimming part of the triathlon, even with potentially alligators present. So, we, we give people something that they typically don't have in a triathlon. You compete against the water and your own physical well-being. You also compete against potentially 12, 13, 14-foot gators that are out here, and since we are animal friendly, we are alerting our people along throughout the community that we do have geese throughout the community, and as council pointed out, our teams pulled together to get some signage out, because we have geese of all ages and all sizes traversing Western Boulevard, and we're trying to draw attention to that. So, we just encourage people to watch out for gators, watch out for geese, and any other furry friendly animals that may be in Jacksonville. They're part of our one city as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and go into A and B for budget discussion. Unless anybody has anything additional at this point?
One thing.
Yes, sir.
A little blurb about Jacksonville Jamboree. I happen to be circulating around the Commons, since that's my way home. I'm going to say that I have never seen so many people in the Commons area attending that event. My hats off to Susan Bishop and Michael LaCory, their staff, the Recreation Commission, and I'm going to tell you that if you weren't there, you missed a heck of an event, you need to put it on your calendar for next year.
We'll take a recess and go to number, A and B.
Thanks, Mayor. This is the last scheduled workshop for the agenda. We had one item that we were going to bring back to council, which would be the Boys and Girls Club request. We wanted to clarify that request. Then we have another item that has, that's come to us after the fact, and that's, the school system wants to add an SRO position that they're going to fully fund. And so, for us, we want to present this to council because we wouldn't just throw this in your budget without explaining this to you, but that opportunity is, is an excellent opportunity for us, because as you know, we have been able to put school resource officers that are part of our team into all of our City of Jacksonville schools, as well as the ones that are in the county, and the Sheriff's Department has placed SROs inside of all the schools. We have a sergeant that oversees the SROs inside of our system. This would be an additional SRO sergeant position that would, I believe they would house at their administrative building. And so, we would have to, we'll, we have all that information pulled together, but I just wanted to know if there was any questions on that, and Chief Inero can add interleague logistics on it. But collectively, this is a hundred percent, instead of typically our SROs, they operate from August through end of May or so, and we pick them up for basically 60 days. So, we handle that percentage of it, but for this, it's a year-round, fully funded position.
Listen, if one additional we'll be adding to the...
Yes, sir. So, you'll see adding an additional officer, and you'll see that impacted on the police department's side of the budget.
Let me sort of understand this, the officer, the sergeant plays a dual role, is that true? They're actually an SRO also?
They, they will be an SRO, but they'll also be working with the school system to help identify threats and, and work to make the schools safer, also helping with the supervision of those SROs. We have 14 SROs now. So, being able to have at least two sergeants go by and visit them and work with them on security plans and those kinds of things can be very beneficial to us.
Does that mean every school in Onze County have an SRO, and we have an armed presence in every school?
Every school in the city. I, I think they're, they're working toward every school in the county.
County, but every school in the city?
Every school in the city, including Thompson Early Childhood, has an SRO.
And Dr. Collins said at the State of the Community last week that their goal is to have SROs in all schools in the county for next year. But definitely ours, ours will cover. And I think that's a great, that's a great effort by the school system. It's a good partnership to have for us.
Dr. Harrigan and myself worked on the first, and SRO degree, the safe schools at.
It's a good partnership.
Yeah. Think that we have to have, but certainly seems to be necessary nowadays. Is this just promoting someone, or is this like a whole new position altogether, like adding a whole new officer?
So, we can go through the promotion process to promote somebody, and then we'll evaluate whether we take an existing sergeant moving over to that position, depending on who gets promoted.
But you will have a new position altogether. So, if the person's promoted, if we have an internal promoted, then we'll still have the other slot, and that's why it matters, what Mr. Wardens is talking about, because when you look at our sheet of personnel, you're going to see that position added, but you're going to see on a, on a business sheet, you're going to see the expense and the revenue are, are offsetting. So, it's, it's a, almost a net sum zero, how you look at it.
So, it will be an internal hire?
Well, I mean, we'll advertise. We have some, we have some folks that we hired that have significant experience that obviously will, will try to, to get that position.
If you recall, when we added the SRO positions during this year, we recruited an individual from Texas to be an SRO, and then recently, I think this week, we had an individual from Tennessee who's joined our team, and again, an experienced officer coming to our area. So, our, our recruitment efforts are paying off, and then our internal promoting has shown beneficial. So, I think we're, I think we're doing good. Right now, I think we were at about 10 positions that are vacant, but those are the 10 that council approved, six for the grant, four for the SROs. We're pretty good. Council's done a good job.
Actually, we hired, they started yesterday, eight, eight positions started yesterday, so we're, we're four positions short right now. We have four certified officers that feel like will be hired within the next, the next 60 days.
Do you have any of VLET right now?
The, those eight will go into VLET, start VLET actually Monday, and go through August.
We hired them on Monday, brought them in for orientation, Mayor, and then next Monday, they'll start the class.
Eight, twenty, and one, P O one, and we hired...
It was actually a military...
Yeah, it's very exciting. Any other questions on that one, concerns?
I've got a question on the budget. Is there any news on the YMCA swimming pool complex issue?
No, sir. Nothing other than what I said. You had two emails last week, we got those.
Yeah.
And at this point in time, my conversation with the county attorney was that Mr. Sewell is getting some additional information to satisfy some of the questions of his commissioners in reference to what the beginning fees would be for county residents, et cetera, something along those lines. And I know John Pierce is working on a survey for them, so there's a clawback of property that there will be an understanding of. But that's the only thing that I have to update the council on.
Because when did they want that letter by? Was it in early June?
In the middle of June is what Mr. Sewell's requested. I'm hoping that the information can be gotten to the county, that they'll be in a position to put on their June, the fourth meeting, the first meeting in June, so that they can go ahead and give their acquiescence, or whatever they're going to do. And then I'm not sure about where the school board stands at all.
Rate rates for county residents and rates for city residents, are we nitpicking to...
I'm not, Mr. Bitter, and I expressed that to Mr. DeSelm, but he, his commissioners believe that's important, because I told him, whatever rate you start at with, it won't be the rate you finish with, that inflation, other factors will always play into it. To me, there are a lot bigger issues that need to be addressed and considered by all three governmental entities, but I'm, you know, I can only represent you as the body. Mr. DeSelm is doing what he believes his commissioners are requesting.
What do you think, what do you think are the other bigger issues?
The, the funding mechanism, who's going to take care of the ongoing maintenance, the capital expenditures. One of the items that came up in the discussion is some of these dehumidifiers that service, and Mr. Sos is here, and he can chime in here, that, that service some of these nanatoriums or indoor swimming pools. They go out, you're looking at an expense of $400,000 or $500,000 to replace them. There's a lot of...
Don't call me.
A lot of big issues that are bigger than what your rates are. But again, all of these are big issues for, for different folks as they consider. But as soon as I get more information, I will get right back in touch with the mayor and council.
All right.
Thank you.
And we won't have any type of action until, until the state makes an action on if they're going to participate in the project and our other partners. So, for us, we've not programmed those dollars in to the FY24 or into their own capital project budget until these things happen. And so, just know that would then come back to council as a budget amendment and final consideration to take that act, just so we're not parking those items on the side. The other item, Mayor, was the Boys and Girls Club. So, I sent the email out to council just to, just to clarify. The request turns out for FY24 to be $50,000, 25 from Tracy's funds, and then an additional 25, as of right now, that we would say would be general fund funds, but 50,000 for that next year, and so, we would need that, if council's good with that, we would program that in to your final FY24 consideration for, for June, so you can look at that.
Is One Place budgeted?
We are, we are programming that in, yes, sir. That million dollars will be in.
And has the county moved anything on it?
They did not. So, the county's contribute, contribution to One Place is only services, which is similar to how Chief Inero's budget includes roughly 25, 27,000 a year for services, and that's what the county's doing. And they didn't do this last year, so it's actually a new number, but it's not, it's not in the ballpark of what we're doing as a city.
It's not through capital.
It's only, it's only programmed.
The Boys and Girls, is this a capital request, or is this a, is this a one-time fund, do you know, or is this an ongoing, what do you, what, is it supporting a specific project?
It's all program oriented. So, originally, one of the thoughts was they wanted to do some items to Sandy Run to improve that facility. Now, we're only looking at program dollars for next year. And then they're going to reevaluate their program and then bring that back to council to look at if that's another opportunity for them.
And that would, that would be an annual request coming through our private public partner, our private partnerships?
And one of the things I want to remind council on for Sandy Run is, this is an area where city programs have tried previously, and, and for one reason or another, we weren't successful. So, if we're able to have a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, and they can be successful, then we don't have to do that program. We're, we're not going to duplicate services. And I, and I really hope that the Boys and Girls Club is successful in this outreach effort, because as we keep saying, that partnership to add funds to their programming side takes off that necessity for us to reach out. So, it's, I think it's an exciting opportunity for us, and, and, you know, across the board, we want to see it successful.
And I, you know, I have no doubt that it'd be successful, because, you know, Keith runs a tight ship. It's been a long time since anybody was really doing anything in that center, so really looking forward to what the children will get, and I think it's an excellent partnership.
You know, I hope that the community, I don't think...
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Be close by, don't have to worry about transportation. They've got the vans that afford stuff, it'd be nice if they could just go right there.
Right.
Those are the only two changes, Mayor, that we would make that we haven't finalized with council.
Just Mr. Williams shared with me that he was, he's gotten some response from corporates, from corporations in town to provide some, some needed improvements there at the playground area and the basketball area for, for that, so.
And we, we have another opportunity that we're working on, Mayor, to provide some additional assistance through another grant that we've kicked over to, to the Boys and Girls Club this week, or actually, last week, we talked to them. So, we're trying to flesh this out, much like some of the partners that he's worked with, maybe we're one of the partners that he's talked to, but we're trying to bring in multiple people to, to give it a, a good opportunity to be successful. It's very exciting. Multiple people going in the same direction.
Money well spent.
It's going to be fantastic. All have, Mayor.
Period?
Period.
This is it for the budget?
That's it.
So, what, what are you looking at as far as approval date?
June 6th. Consider on the 6th, if you have any heartache on the 6th, then you have 14 days after that.
Was anybody, was there any other concerns about, is this scheduled at all?
No, sir. We've answered all those questions.
Thank you for the amended budget thing. My, my numbers didn't add up when, in the agenda looked at, I said, huh, new math again.
That was my math, that's why we brought Chalante tonight, so Chalante fixed it.
You, you and Richard again. South Carolina math.
Chalante fixed it, that's all the math.
Gail did not allow Dr. Woodruff, and apparently somebody needed, we need to play similar restrict... Yeah, I think, I think no math in public.
I think you and your staff have done a great job with this year's budget.
Well, it makes it easy to read.
We seem to have all the answers for questions raised, too.
Thank you, sir. Sabrina's team has done an excellent job.
This is her first one, too.
Her first with us, Chalante's first with us, Eli's first at Budget Manager, so collectively, those three individuals have, have led us through a process that's, I think it's been a good process.
Makes it easy to navigate, for people to understand, and y'all let it be available, you know, for everybody, so if anybody does have concerns, it's accessible, so.
And we've been able to answer a few calls. We had, had some people call and ask a few questions, program questions, which has been value added, but the directors, like we talk about, there's plans for next year, and so we just have to keep our directors tied into the process so we know what we're going to look at.
Any, any questions, any concerns? We've done everything we need to do. I'd need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Your own favorite?
Aye.[1782.47]